Streaming and want to welcome everyone this morning, Councillor Matt Duncan sends his regrets. We don't see Councillor you McDermott on the screen yet, but he may be here. He sometimes is a little difficulty getting in. Anyway, we're going to call this meeting to order. And we're going to start with a moment of reflection and with everything going on in the world and especially Ukraine, we should have lots to reflect on. Thank you. So you can make a disclosure appearing interest now or at any point in time through the meeting. We have no additions for the agenda. So if I could have a motion to confirm the agenda, that would be lovely. Moved by Councillor Willhahn, second by Councillor McKenzie. Those in favor? That's carried. Okay, and I'll have another motion here. Council receives consent agenda items five point one to five point one four. And approves the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two special council minutes and the February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two council minutes. Does anyone want to see any item pulled for discussion? Not seeing any hands go up. Oh, there's Councillor McDermott. Now we're good. Uh, no one wants to see anything pulled. So then the motion is that we receive concept agenda items five point one to five point one four. And approve the February tenth special council minutes and the February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two council minutes moved by Councillor Callum. Seconded by Councillor McDermott. Those in favor? Well, that is carried. And then we will move on to the public meetings hearings and delegations that we have Anne Lindsay. And it's Dale Schattenkirk coming on as well.
And I can introduce.
From KPMG for the organizational design review report. And Laurie is going to introduce this.
So thank you through the warden council. This project was funded through a modernization grant from the province. But you may recall, it was a two-part project. Uh, one to conduct process reviews to find efficiencies and the second piece was to review the org design for alignment with the county strategic plan. The report confirms our corporate structure is appropriate with some opportunities for change in the future should council wish. And that we are similarly situated with comparable municipalities today. The report is presented for information purposes. Council is only being asked to receive it. And any future recommendations for change would be brought to council via staff report. Process reviews, you will see them come forward through individual reports by the managers. So that council can see the efficiencies as staff apply the skills they learned in the process of lean process mapping. So today we have Anne Lindsay and Dale Schattenkirk from KPMG. They are here to present the report and I will turn it over to Anne.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Lori, for the introduction. Um, I'll just start by introducing myself and allow my colleague Dale to introduce himself. So my name is Anne Lindsay. I'm a senior manager with KPMG's uh lean and process improvement. Team I'm based out of Kingston, but was born and raised in St. Mary's, Ontario. So very familiar with Perth County as my my hometown, essentially my home area of the province. I've been with KPMG now for three years. Previously, I was a senior leader in an municipal government and also I have a specialty in process improvement, organizational design. And service integration is really where my work has been focused over the last three to five years. So I'll pass it over to Dale to introduce himself.
Thanks, Anne. I'm Dale Schattenkirk, I'm a partner in Regions East. I head up the overall regions. Lean Office and Process Improvement Office for Ontario, Ontario and Atlantic Canada. I I'm not going to take a lot of credit for the report and Stan a lot, a lot of pretty much all of the work here and in my opinion, has done a great job. The art focus though is really to to help you guys through, you know, today to walk you through the presentation and answer any questions that you might that you might have. So I'm going to turn it back down.
Thank you. So KPMG was under was engaged to undertake an organization and administrative review of the county. This was funded through the province's municipal modernization fund, which supports the modernization of small and rural municipalities throughout the province. The overall goal of the project was to review the management design of the county and identify an organizational structure that best positions the county for sustainable and responsible serve responsive service delivery that can be achieved without impacting frontline services. County was also seeking to identify some process improvement opportunities through a review of some key internal business processes. The county's current organizational structure can be categorized as a functional model, meaning that the county is organized around major services and activity groups and core capability is based really in the functional expertise expertise and economies of scale of each department. This organizational structure is consistent with other similarly sized municipalities. And it's very common throughout municipal government in the province. Based on our analysis of the county's current organizational design, the number of opportunities for change with respect to organizing organizational structure appear to be limited. The current structure is consistent with similarly sized municipalities. Existing departments are also consistent with opt optimal organizational structure based on the nature of services provided and their existing reporting lines. However, we were able to identify some opportunities for change to more purposefully align certain business units to support key priorities identified in the strategic plan and also address some of the items for consideration based on our findings from our current state analysis. As part of the stakeholder engagement for the project, KPMG met with management staff across the county for confidential interviews. In addition to this, we also facilitated focus groups with middle and frontline staff to better understand the organizational structure, roles and responsibilities, services and processes carried out by each department. And identify challenges and opportunities for operational efficiencies and continuous improvement. We also met for two individual interviews with elected officials, the warden and the deputy warden for their perspective on areas of strength and area of opportunity within the organization. In total, eleven interviews were conducted and six focus groups were facilitated. In October, we facilitated a series of working sessions with county staff to perform a review of eight key business processes. With the objective of modernizing these internal processes to find efficiencies. As a result, we created seventeen current state process maps, which is essentially outlines the work steps for each process in a visual format. Um, and identifies decision points and and then also areas of opportunity for improvement. So we created seventeen of these maps and identified forty specific opportunities for improvement. Key processes reviewed by the KPMG and the county staff are highlighted here on your screen. One of the goals from our process review workshops was to wherever possible, really transfer the knowledge and the necessary tools to county employees to enable them to develop their own solutions to operational and process issues and challenges in the future. So really kind of transfer the process review skill set onto staff that participated in our working sessions. During our current state analysis and stakeholder consultation, we collected relevant information on current organizational structure, roles and responsibilities and service delivery items. And we heard some key themes. Um, there was a common commitment by all members of the organization to ensure that the needs of Perth County residents are met. Um, all members of the organization we interviewed took a lot of pride in the work that they do and the services that they deliver to Perth County residents. We heard that the relationship between the county and the lower tiers has improved significantly in recent years with increasing collaboration and joint projects. We also heard that the large SMT has occasion occasionally resulted in inefficiencies and decision-making and communication. That administrative support roles within the organization as a whole are lacking. But we heard that internal communication between departments has really improved under the county's current leadership. We heard the CIO is consistent and clear in her direction to staff and plays a very key stabilizing role for the organization. And that these recent corporate culture changes have been very, very positive for the organization. So the findings from our current state analysis provided the foundation for which to explore the various design items for consideration that are listed here when we look to the organizational design. In order to arrive at the preferred organizational design model, we had a number of working sessions with the project team to develop high-level structure options for the organization. So over a period of two working sessions, KPMG constructed three functional organizational design models for consideration by the project team. And the project team selected design principles to assist in the evaluation of these options. The evaluation criteria was based on leading practice in organizational design. Pardon me. And centered on principles such as efficient and effective decision-making, processes, strategy, performance management and communication. So KPMG and the project team met met again to select and refine the preferred model for implementation. This slide has a visual of the preferred model selected and enhanced by the project team. You can see each department is represented by their functions and not their specific roles. It consists of the following changes to the current structure. Forestry bylaw would be realigned under the provincial offenses business unit. So this is consistent with provincial offenses portfolio of bylaw enforcement and also court administration and aligns with the current financial operations for the allocation of revenue paid out to member municipalities through the county's court services provincial offenses program. The CEMC function would move from reporting directly to the CIO to reporting through emergency services. And this would then reduce the direct number of direct reports to the CA CIO and also more appropriately align the CEMC responsibilities with emergency services department. The creation of a new business analyst portfolio focused on continuous improvement initiatives across the corporation under the IT business unit would support the service effectiveness and service excellence priorities outlined in the strategic plan. The creation of the business analyst portfolio would support the organization embracing a culture of continuous improvement and operational excellence. And then additionally, when opportunities arise in the future through attrition, the county could consider moving archives under legislative services and pursue a combined development and planning department. Amalgamating the economic development and tourism as well as the planning functions into one business unit. When we reference attrition throughout our report, we're referring to voluntary departures of employees from the organization, either through retirements or if a staff member chooses to depart the organization for another opportunity. It is common best practice to take these opportunities through attrition to recalibrate and examine any need for change in structure at that time. Only the CEMC move to emergency services has been identified for short-term or immediate implementation. The other changes will be implemented over the medium to long term or when opportunity arises throughout attrition. There is spec expected to be no financial impact to the realignment of the CEMC function under emergency services. And also no financial impact to the realignment of the forestry bylaw function under the provincial offenses business unit. The financial impact from the creation of a new business analyst portfolio focused on continuous improvement initiatives across the corporation is unknown at this time. A job evaluation would be required to determine total compensation and ongoing financial impacts. It is important to note, though, that this role really should be designed to be self-funding. Operational excellence initiatives such as process redesign, data analytics, building a corporate culture of continuous improvement and really achieving efficiencies throughout the organization could realize soft and hard cost savings that could compensate for the financial impact of this new role within its first year. Then the return on investment in this position would be leveraged annually for additional ongoing corporate savings. Long-term recommendations for organizational structure changes that include realigning archives within legal corporate services under the legislative services business unit as well as combining economic development and tourism and planning into into one division. The realignment of archives under legislative services would enable the archives team, their very skilled team, uh, to support broader corporate initiatives and more effectively connect their their human resources to the organization. So this would add flexibility for managing staff and capacity as well as resource leveling within legislative services. So this change may result in a financial impact to the existing manager of legislative services and clerk compensation and would be determined through a job evaluation process. Restructuring existing economic development and tourism and planning departments to create a combined planning and development division will support the strategic goals of growth and economic development as well as community development planning within the strategic plan and allow the county to leverage these combined resources to create momentum, retain focus and flex resources to support Perth County's desire for growth in agriculture and economic viability as well as to support the framework to to ensure that growth is responsible, purposeful and planned. This change could result in the creation of a new director level position to lead the division, which would result in ongoing annual compensation costs upon the completion of a job evaluation. The creation of the business analyst role obviously would require a council budget approval in two thousand and twenty-three. And this implementation should also align with the outputs and recommendations from the five-year IT and GIS strategic plan completed by the Perry Group. We recommend that our proposed changes to the IT business unit and this new role be considered within the context of that review. As far as long-term implementation, um, you know, the recommended organizational structure changes such as realigning archives under legislative services as well as combining economic development and tourism and planning into one division are projected to proceed only when opportunities arise through attrition. You know, that voluntary departure of staff from the organization through retirement or or other opportunities. And we've projected this on on our implementation roadmap from from basically two thousand and twenty-four and beyond, but it essentially just means that, you know, when the opportunity does arise, if it does, um, to to take a take a look at that. Those two departments at that time, that opportunity may never arrive. And so it's just included on the implementation roadmap as a as a guide for for looking forward to two thousand and twenty-four and beyond. So I love this is I'm going to end on this slide. This is one of my very favorite slides and and graphics. It's not a KPMG graphic. But one of the objectives of the project, this project of organizational administrative review was to position the county for sustainable and responsive service delivery. A key component to sustainable and responsive service delivery really is continuous improvement and process review. The ability to find efficiencies and eliminate waste in processes will create capacity for staff to focus on their highest value work and also the strategic priorities outlined in in the strategic plan. So it not only plays a supporting role to the refinements, uh, you know, within your organizational design, but that continuous improvement culture also ensures longs long-term sustainability for the municipality. And so if you can, if you can see on the top two quadrants, really on the left and the right on the left is the typical organization. And you can see, you know, executives, middle managers and operational level staff really are spending a lot of time doing their day jobs and and firefighting, you know, and and there's only a really a sliver uh, of of time for strategy, you know, and also um improvement in in what we see as a typical organization. But when we move to the right-hand column and we look at a sustainable organization, we look at executives, middle managers and operational staff spending an appropriate amount of time on their core work, their day job. And then really weaving that process improvement or continuous improvement culture throughout the organization at all levels. And what that does is it creates that additional capacity for for more strategy work and really for senior management to focus on, you know, large project strategy, moving the organization forward and for frontline and middle middle staff to be empowered really to solve their day-to-day problems themselves through the through continuous improvement and and process review. So I'm going to end my presentation there and stop sharing my screen and um turn it over to council for questions.
Perfect. Now I can see people. Okay, you've got the report here. Questions from council? I'm sure there's got to be some. Councillor Willhahn.
Yeah, uh, thank you for the report and uh, I guess I kind of think it's a little premature. In as much as we've had quite a few changes over the last six months to a year, and I don't think we've seen how this is all going to shake out. I believe we're still trying to hire one or two people. And so um, I'll just make a couple of comments. I don't believe EDC should be part of planning is at times they have a conflict and uh, I don't think that it would benefit either one to be in the same group. And I see you have uh, leading practices, say minimum layers, and yet you're promoting a director position. So I have trouble comprehending that. I understand that the CIO has perhaps too many direct reports, but when you increase your layers, uh, I don't think that's very effective either. So I think that we should wait and see what the Perry report review does and have all the information before we go too far along with this.
Other questions or comments? Councillor Agit, or Deputy Warden Agit, sorry.
What other municipalities have joined their economic development and planning departments?
Um, so that's a good question. There there are some. I I can't think of them, you know, off the top of my head, but throughout municipal government in the province, it really depends on whether you're a lower tier or upper tier, number one, and also number two, the size of the municipality. We often see economic development as well in under corporate services. Typically, there there aren't often economic development and tourism departments that exist as a singular singular department. Um, so that's uh, that's, you know, another what we see across the province as far as as that goes.
So there are no other ones in a situation like we are? I'd like to know what there is in in our um, you know, single. Is there somebody out there or not? Like, I'm not really sure. I want to be the first one that does that. I agree with Bob. These departments need to be separate. They are, they are separate identities and they should not be joined together. Um, some other comments. Why is Spruce Lodge and Health Unit under emergency services? They are not governed by the county of Perth. They're governed by the town of St. Mary's, the county of Perth and this uh, city of Stratford under our municipal liaison committee. They do not answer to us directly.
I believe that was included just as a function of um, you know, the various things that the county, the county oversight. Um, so when we listed the functions of the departments, we didn't list positions, we just listed various county oversight. So that would be under emergency services as far as the organizational structure goes, but if that's incorrect, we could certainly adjust our report to reflect that.
Who is the project team? Mentions this project team different times throughout the report. Who was that?
Oh, the project team was the CIO, the Director of Legal and Corporate Services and the Manager of Human Resources. And myself and Dale from KPMG.
And so how much then say did the rest of the senior management team have as the process went along? This the project team made all the decisions or was senior management team involved as well?
Uh, so we had a number, we had one-on-one individual confidential interviews with every single member of the senior management team during our current state analysis. And as well, we had um, multiple members of the senior management team, I would say pretty much everybody involved throughout our number of process mapping workshops as well when we looked at a process review. So there was a lot of engagement from the senior management in that way.
We also talk about the CIO having less departments report to them because they have higher value work and strategic priorities. What are those?
So what we mean by that is essentially like every person within the organization has what we call their highest value work, right? So it's the job that you're hired to do, whether you're the CIO, whether you're the manager of human resources, whether you're the customer service representative. And the idea of minimizing the number of direct reports to the CIO who who currently has a large number of them would create additional capacity for for her to just focus on her highest value work, which is her core responsibilities of her jobs, you know, strategy. Oversight of the entire organization, leadership, support to council, that kind of thing. Dale, did you want to add it? Did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, no, I think probably be redundant, anything that I do say, but it is uh, to the to the comments around there it is. You know, we come in, we look from the outside in and when we do offer offer our advice, it's based on what we've seen. You know, cross Canada, working with many different municipalities and and we appreciate the nuances that that you guys would see from a daily. You know, a daily perspective and uh, and I think the whole reason of of today is to to get your feedback and and be able to you know, take that and and look at it back in context, but but the value add that Dan was talking about is is really important and you know, as Councillor uh, Mohammed had alluded to, you know, we we don't, we don't lightly uh, comment adding an upward step in any organization. So when we we look at it, it was because of the position and where, you know, where the the reporting was, that was the the main reason for that now. These are our suggestions for things that we have have seen. It doesn't uh, I'm I'm pretty sure that none of you are going, well, KPMG said this, so now we have to do it. We want to, we want to make sure that at the end of the day. You know, everybody is that this makes sense for the organization and and we're giving you different perspectives of what we're doing, but but the value add piece is is pretty critical in any organization that to be a high-performing organization means that all your staff are working at ninety, at least ninety percent of their skill set and what their job description is. And and more times than not, in an organization the size of of yours, you have a lot of people wearing multiple hats and and just the way that it has to be and and being able to focus on the top end of their skill set ninety percent of the time isn't an easy, easy place to get to. And so if you, I think of everybody that's on this call, if you were to look at you know, your day job, what your job description is and to say how much of that that day did I spend doing what I'm supposed to be doing versus putting out fires and 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 supporting? That's that's where Anne's coming from in her comments is how do we, how do we have the appropriate people doing the appropriate task to get the the best service for the for the municipal?
Councillor Hurley canned up once and then I seen Councillor Casenberg just come up. So Councillor Hurley first.
Oh, you can hear me there. Good counsel.
As long as you're talking to that old mic, I'm good.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, no, you know what? It's kind of funny. A bunch of my concerns have been answered here. And yeah, I I understand, though, on the other hand, here running ninety percent efficiency of your day-to-day job, that is incredibly imperative. It's a lot to digest here. I had some concerns as well. The forestry taking that out of legal, I understand, you know, planning needs to be aware of it, but ultimately it's a pretty important part for you know, the answer to or involved with the right authority in the event of, you know, we have some situations. Are involved with the right authority in the event of, you know, we have some situations. So a little bit here as well for me, a question structure that was given to us. And uh, Bob and Rhonda answered my other questions. So interesting, it is a lot to digest. If you want to understand efficiency. That is very, very important. We shouldn't be, I understand. So, thank you.
Counselor Casenberg.
Uh, thank you, Warden H. And um, I, you know, I have to admit to a little bit of a bias. Against rearranging deck chairs for the sake of of uh, anything but trying to create greater value in the work. And so. Uh, I'd like to sort of narrow my my comments and my questions to one particular change, just for the sake of trying to. Explore the value that's added to the organization or to the employees by making it. You have recommended that we um, consider aligning the C E M C underneath a group which you're calling emergency services. And I suppose my question there is, how does the organization achieve greater value? Uh, with either both the employee, the management chain or the work outputs by that specific change which you targeted?
Um, well, so the reason, one of the reasons, um, number one is that emergency services supports. Um, you know, the county as a whole, all of the member municipalities and the C E M C function would be. Operating in very much the the same way where it's supporting the all of the member municipalities. It's focused on, you know, community emergency management coordination. Uh, emergency services is aligned as far as their portfolios go uh, in regards to that. And then the other um, reason that we considered that change is is because. Some of the feedback that we received and and through our current state analysis, we identified the number of direct reports to the C E, C A O. Um, you know, was significant and so realigning. C E M C function under emergency services would create that additional capacity for the C C A O as far as adding value. Dale, did you want to add to that?
No, I don't uh, I don't think I can add anything to that.
Anything further there, Counselor Casenberg?
Well, you know, uh, I mean, at the end of the day, you wind up having to ask the question. Um, does, does a movement like that improve the work output of the individual? And I'm not sure that I've heard the answer to that. Um, I understand that uh, there are are places in the organization that are overburdened in terms of of um. Supervising and span of control. I I get that point. Um, but you know, you you. Way that against uh, will there be decline or value increase in in the work output and the quality of the work and and so forth and. I I I'm just on the front of the C E M C and and I'm using it as a particular example. I'm not saying that I don't have. Concerns as my colleagues have expressed in other places, but in that particular example, I I I'm not sure that I see that. We've actually hit any improved target around ninety percent performance that you talked about. Against the the highest skills on the person's um, chart of skills, if you will. Um, uh, through a move like that. So I I I guess I'm encouraging a little bit of of thought about that. I will add one other comment. Um, I think I agree with my colleagues. I have some concerns actually about the. The type of work that economic development and planning does. They they seem. Uh, you can see how there are parallels or or places where they may line up and I get that. But I think in terms of the the actual sort of. Type of work that uh. I don't even know how to put this, sort of the, 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 the culture of the work. Um, uh, does seem a little bit um, starkly different and uh, trying to marry those two things under the the same. Reporting umbrella um, might work out just peachy fine, but might also be uh, just. Storms of conflict from time to time that uh, that um, would not be in the county's benefit and would not lend itself to. Greater customer focus or efficiency.
Um, I wouldn't mind responding if I if I could ever. I really appreciate your your comments, uh, Counselor Casenberg. Um. So a a few things when, you know, this is a a summary report that that we've given you is like ten minutes out of the last four months of. Of work that we've been doing and the extensive detail that that we've gone to, that's uh, in the primary report. So some of the things that that you've brought up are are important when. The suggestions that we have do go much deeper than what we've just talked about in our our limited time with you today. So when. When a change is is suggested. It also comes with uh, with a lot of structure to move through that change and like you. You raised a number of different flags about, you know, here's some some issues that might. Might come up uh, along the way, or how would that structure look or? Or how could we actually rule that that out? And what are the things that we do have to take into consideration and? And you're right, so all of our stuff is on the front end of that. So when you move forward into into future state planning, uh, what's called the, you know. Plan, do study act cycles or tests of change. That's where all of that's taken into account to to test because it's. Right now, uh, we're using, uh, you know, our experience in other municipalities, uh. Uh, things that, working with our other colleagues within K P M G, things that they've, they've seen that works well. Work well, all the feedback that we've gotten from numerous staff in in uh, in the organization. Uh, to say that this seems like the best choice. But but we also don't want to discount the fact that that we're making these decisions at the boardroom table, so to speak. Versus in the real world and and your points are very well taken and and are have been expressed in and in. Written in a report and and discussed about what would the next steps look like to get to a good spot where. We don't just change for the sake of change, you know, we've, we've all lived through many, many cabinet shuffles at provincial federal level. And we know why they do that. It's just to to shuffle the deck chairs and hope for the best. And you know, versus what what we're also offering deeper in the report is, is that you need to really think about all those things that you just brought up. As as you move through these change and you test and don't, you don't just go, hey, congratulations, Monday, you're, this is your new role. Good luck, we're all counting on you. There's, there's very thoughtful processes put in place to to achieve the right outcomes.
Did you want to make a comment, Counselor Casenberg? I think you sealed your hand up.
I just, just one more sort of general observation, uh, if I might, and and to your points, uh, Dale, um, I think. You know, when we, when we, like, I'm a fan of experimentation in government and and so you talked about tests of change and and. Um, you know, I think that there are times when governments have to stick their necks out and and do things and find out what happens and sometimes. We will fail, right? But when you talk about organizational structure changes, the the challenge is. That often that that you're talking about significant salaries that you're putting in place and you're drawing or recruiting significantly high. Qualified skilled professionals and um, that's not really a place to experiment all that much, right? Like, you're either going to commit yourself to it and um, and rely on your, the the data that you've got and your instincts about it. Or um, you're going to do experiments that could prove quite costly in the human resources realm. And so I I just sort of draw that to our attention as well. And I think my colleagues have sort of spoken earlier. Counselor Wilhelm sort of talked a little bit about this. Um, but I think we have to be very mindful. Um, about uh, too much sort of experimenting and tests of change in organizational structure. Especially if, you know, and and my argument could be flawed, that you don't always get. Um, significant changes in value for the customer or value for the organization. Um, you might get a a piece of value on the span of control, but but um, you might trade off in other places, right?
Yeah, and you're, I I think we're, we're singing from the same song she here and I appreciate it. And when. We talk about test of change, it's not throwing the dog over the fence to see if it, if it's going to bite the kids in the next yard or not. Like, it's not. You know, it's not that extreme. There's a lot of things that we can do on the front end and uh. Um, you're right, it's called, in our world, it's called diminishing marginal utility. There's this false assumption that if you add a body to something, you get a full body's work out of it and that's. Very seldom the case, but the, on the front end, there's a toolset we we use uh. It's called three P and it's about actually designing a whole structure before implementing a change to test it. Before you actually make the change to see, is this really going to work? Because to your point. Um, if you shuffle people around and and reassign and then see how is this going to work and go, huh? It didn't work. Now we have to shuffle this back. That's. That's detrimental to an organization versus actually modeling this all out. We've got some really good tools to be able to help and say. You know, would this work? And when you, when you start putting all of that together, it either becomes clear that this will work or. Wow, this would be a colossal failure if we, if we actually forward. So. So not actually making a structural change, but building the structural change ahead of time in a test environment to say, how will this work? So.
Counselor McDermott had his hand up there once and then Counselor, right?
Uh, yes, very uh, informative and uh, interesting report. I have not seen a report like that before and. Uh, I agree with the uh, other speakers. It's uh. Something that must be done uh, very, very carefully. And like I noticed the archives, you talk about uh. Uh, bringing them in and then they can use their skill set to help the rest of the uh, organization. And I understand that, but I don't think uh, something like archives. That they would have um, a lot of time to do that, especially if there's attrition in that uh, in that unit. Um, so I would be very concerned about changing the uh, the archives because I consider um. Uh, especially the time we live, uh, history is unbelievably important. And I would not want to uh, have less people working in that unit. That would be absolutely necessary to make that unit successful. Um, just uh, just some comments.
Counselor, right?
Um, it's hard when for the last two years I haven't been to the courthouse. I don't know everybody's workload. It reminds me of the Bruce Nuclear Power Plant. The guy puts a two-by-four on his shoulder, walks around for eight hours a day for ten years. Everybody thinks he's working. I'm not sure what everybody's workload is. Um, I do know in our structure, we have some rock stars. And we have some house bands, if everybody knows what I mean. I don't want a house band leading our rock stars. We, and and I don't point to specific divisions because people have pointed out divisions. We've been down the road, Dale, where we had a division that we didn't like. We took it to the lower tiers. We brought it back. Everybody knows what I'm talking about. Um. Is it working? It's, it's, it's. It's, it's coming around. It might be the house band, but. The the divisions on this, we're passing down to the next council. Right? We're, we're gonna do none of this except maybe C E M C in this term of council. Then they could be ten new people sitting here. And we have to make sure the recommendations we do today. Don't get implemented without, without them knowing. That this was just suggestions by by Dale and Anne and Anne, I probably played ball with one of your brothers or something over there in St. Mary's. Um, but I just wanted to say that our rock stars, we don't want to hold them back. Because because they're really good at doing what they do. And some of our other ones, we've got to make them. Rock stars by bringing them up. I know you're up and down chart there. So that's. That's what I want to make sure we don't hold anybody back by changing.
Laurie, you want to comment?
Thank you through the warden. Uh, just for council's information, this is a report for your receipt only. It is not. Something we're asking you to implement today. Um, I do want to say that, yes, we've had a number of changes over the years. I've been here for four years. When I started. The C E M C was in paramedic services, did report to the chief of paramedic services and was moved. Um, over under my own portfolio corporate services. And the archives, when I started, reported to myself as the county clerk. So we have had changes that have been moved around. Um, based on people and this report today is to show you the kind of. Of uh, documentation and thinking that we should be doing when we bring a change to council. It shouldn't just be done on the fly. There should be a methodology behind it. We should be able to demonstrate. Uh, how it adds value to the corporate structure and in alignment with the strategic plan. Um, I will say as a, certainly as a point of privilege that I consider um, all our stuff. Um, to be rock stars. Um, you you would just see certain um, uh, product from certain uh, staff in a, in a, in a. Uh, external uh, manner. There are uh, production of staff um, work. That council may never see because it's internal, but I do want to um, express to council certainly. We do have people um, working at high level of capacity. There are gaps in the organization in terms of support and part of this report is to see how we could shore up. And better support the management team, which is something that I have expressed before with council. In some of the other moves that we have made, but certainly it is to demonstrate to council that there is um. Uh, there is a a preferred manner in coming to council, requesting support on staff changes that it's not just done. Based on moving staff around and aligning them with certain supervisors. And I know that has been done in the past. So I just wanted to make that point. And there, we're just asking you to receive the report today. We know we need to wait for the Perry Group report. Wanted to note, council, the Perry Group report. Is funded by the province, but not through modernization, so that did not have the kind of. Uh, um, deadline that the modernization project has. So we had to bring this report forward in advance. Of the Perry Group uh, work. And I just wanted to point out that a lot of the same individuals who would be. Uh, working on many projects, council will remember that Perry Group is about I T and G I S. We know that there's, there's lots of opportunity there. We want to improve our service there. And the lead on that is our I T manager who is also heavily involved in leading with the fire chiefs. The review and the securing of a new. Um, fire radio dispatch uh, service provider. So. Um, there are reasons why we would bring certain reports at certain times and um, just want to assure you this is logical and we are. Bringing it to you in the order that we are required to. So um, lots of information out of this report that will help us as staff inform. Our re- future recommendations to council if we do want to um, approach you to say we want to move some staff. But it is good to get different perspectives.
Other comments from counselors, Deputy Warden Agates.
Just moving forward, I need more clarification because there is a recommendation from the project team, which. Which one they prefer. I'm not on that same page. I think there's some others around the table that aren't on that same page either. So I want to make darn sure as we move forward that council is gonna have. The say before anything happens. I don't want it coming back that, oh, this was the preferred model. They received it for information and we move forward. So if the motion needs to reflect that, that council um. Nothing comes, nothing happens unless authorized by councils. In the, in the motion as well?
Uh. Laurie, you want to address that? I want to make some comments here. You got two, but you can address that comment.
Certainly. Thank you through the warden. I can assure council that um, staff changes on your organizational structure. Uh, would be coming to council in writing through a staff report. And with a request to council to make a resolution at the time. Um, when any staff changes are made. We, we do not move. Staff around willy-nilly and certainly not impacting the organizational structure. Um, without council direction. Council gives the direction. It's your organization chart. I will take that direction from you and make the changes that you require.
Other comments from counselors. We must have run the gamut here. Okay, I get to make a couple of comments. It's at the end. Uh, so this is my third term on county council, I believe. I think organizational review has been a discussion in every term of council, in all honesty. Um, yeah, there's some changes, you know, possible here with these different, three different models we've got. Some of them do make sense, like forestry into legal. Um, a couple of things like that. Uh, but what I am hearing around the. Table though is there not, not a love for the active planning merger down the road. That seems fairly obvious from what I'm hearing. And I think it was Deputy Warden Agates asked the question, who does this? So. I was doing a little homework. In Western Terrell Wardens, there was one municipality that had planning and. Act of merged and that was Simcoe County. There's a couple of others have talked about it, but none of them have really jumped on it. But it was interesting because as of this week, Simcoe County has actually reversed that in our. But it was interesting, because as of this week, Simcoe County has actually reversed that, and are splitting them out again. Um, not sure the reasons why, but I'll find out one of these days. It's hard to get together with people, and we do it always by Zoom. Anyway, uh, this area is strictly for information. And there's lots here, lots of reading. And I'm sure that moving forward, there'll be far more greater discussion in depth as to potential changes.
Absolutely.
And again, we need to get that Perry report. And there's a couple of other things we have to get in place before we make any decisions. Councillor McDermott has his hand up.
Uh, yeah, would it be possible slideshow um, that was presented this morning? Could we also get that sent to us? There's a few slides that were different than our report. Um. Just so I have it for future reference, please.
Yeah, I'm sure KPMG would be willing to do that.
We will do, we'll send it.
I see a couple nod, or I see a nod from Dale there, so. Okay, last chance for comments or questions on this subject and presentation. I'm not seeing any. I have a motion. The Perth County Council receives the process review or design slash KPMG report for information only. Moved by councillor Ait, second by, I think that's councillor Wilhelm, he had to say, yep, councillor Wilhelm, he had his hand in front of his face. Okay, last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor of that motion? That's carried. Perfect. Well, thank you for that presentation. God, it's been months since I've talked to Ann. Anyway, well, thank you, and I'm sure we'll have some discussions at some point in time in the future.
Thank you.
And we're gonna move on.
Thank you.
Um, okay, next, staff reports. And first up is the forestry inspectors report of Badger fact. And Tyler, you're doing that?
So through the organs, thank you uh, to council. We've got the January twenty twenty two forestry inspectors report provided by Marvin Smith, the first county forest inspector. In January, Marvin completed thirteen inspections, twelve as a response to submission of NOIs, and one as a response to a request for a landowner. Uh, historically, this is running on par for what we had last year as well. If there's any questions, be happy to take those at the time, if not, it's not Marvin. Well, thank you for your time.
Questions for Tyler on the forestry report? I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the January two thousand twenty two forestry inspectors report, report for information, moved by councillor McKenzie, second by councillor Casenberg. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. Gonna move on. POA Court Services. Year-end report for shared services, and we have our new person doing that?
We do.
Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Annette, she can introduce our new person.
Good afternoon. Um, we're just gonna bring Danette McCombe on board. Excellent. And Linda?
Look, Linda will be sitting there with the net.
Oh, she'll be with the net. Okay, so I'm just gonna take a brief moment to introduce Danette. Uh, Danette McCombe has joined us in POA as our new incoming manager of court services. Danette is replacing Linda Becker, who is retiring at the end of April. So we are fortunate to have some overlap as Danette um, with Danette joining us. And Linda taking some holidays, but also training Danette. Uh, Danette brings plenty of experience to the table. She's worked in the justice section for the entirety of her career, including with the police and court systems. Uh, she's been involved in provincial offenses for the last eighteen years, and was the POA court manager in Simcoe for twelve years, with very similar responsibilities to what we needed here. For the last six months, Danette has been working at the court with us, familiarizing herself with our services. Danette has a diploma from Fancher College, from the executive business program, and is a certified municipal manager. She is training in dealing with difficult people, mental health, coaching, and supervision. So we look forward to having Danette leverage those skills and applying them here to the benefit of the county. Welcome aboard, Danette.
Thank you very much, Annette, for the introduction, and I certainly look forward to working for Perth County. Um, and I'm very glad Linda's here till April, so I'm trying to get all the knowledge I can from her before she leaves. Anyway, a quick update on this report, uh, POA Court Services twenty twenty one year-end report. Um, an operational update, a little background information. Uh, during twenty twenty one, the Provincial Offenses Court has been running and continues to run matters uh, via Zoom by remote appearances. Um, this has been a challenge, but staff has adapted quite quickly to this um, due, due to COVID nineteen. Um, in twenty twenty one, trials recommenced by the direction of the Regional Senior Justice of the Peace. Um, also, under the Provincial Offenses Act, um, extending timelines on convictions for failing to respond and for enforcing license suspension. Um, that expired in February, so enforcement then continued throughout the year. In November, there was also amendments where the clerks of the court, the POA clerks, rather than the justices of the peace, review the certificates and convict or quash, as well as they grant extensions of time to pay to defendants who need more time. Quick update, uh, in-person matters have been directed to commence if defendants request this. However, only under the permission right now of the Regional Senior Justice of the Peace. We were able to secure two extra blitz courts due to assist the backlog created by COVID nineteen. And hopefully we'll get a few more blitz court days to help remedy any backlog that remains. And also on the report, um, there's a four-year comparison for charges filed from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one, fines collected, and the distribution of revenue. Uh, POA Court Services Division has continued to cover all operating costs and um, advised by the Finance Division that three thousand nine hundred and seven eight sixty-two will be allocated to our municipal partners. And that is the end of the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Danette. Uh, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
By your office a couple of times, but I've never met you. Anyway, uh, questions for Danette on this report? Looks like you're gonna get off pretty lucky here.
Lucky for my first time, thank you.
First, I have a motion, the Perth County Council receives a POA Court Services two thousand and twenty one year-end report for MSSC and operational update report for information. And Perth County Council approved the report for submission to MSSC meeting on March the seventeenth. Moved by councillor Wilhelm, second by councillor McDermott. Those in favor? Scary. Perfect. Thanks, Danette, and uh, thanks Linda too, because I know you're still there. I just not seeing you on the screen.
He's behind me.
When is Linda officially retiring?
April twenty ninth is her last day.
Okay, we've got time to work on that before then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next report is the write-off provincial offenses fines. And is Danette doing that, or Linda?
Um, I am, Danette. This is the write-off report for provincial offenses fines for twenty twenty one. Um, the attached list includes fo- uh, twelve fines totaling fifty-two thousand four hundred and twelve fifty. These are fines under uh, the POA policy, POA dash one zero two. The defendant is deceased, business is closed, and all collection efforts have been exhausted. And a copy of this policy is attached for review. In addition, um, all fines under a thousand for twenty twenty one, total of uh, three thousand nine hundred and eleven. Um, will also be written off. Uh, this is a write-off report for twenty twenty one, for, and we're seeking council's approval.
Okay, questions for Danette on this? I'm not seeing any. I got a quick question. So I looked through the ones we were writing off. Most of them are deceased, so there's no chance of collection there. There was one under uh, Building Code Act, a couple. Um, and they were, the one actually went back quite a ways. There's no way we can actually put a lien on that building or anything like that? For when it changes hands in order to collect that money?
Yeah, no, we also.
Those efforts were exhausted.
Those efforts were exhausted. We also have an external collection um, agency working on these. And though, that has been looked at, and it's been deemed that it's uncollectible.
Okay. Just a quick thought in my mind.
Thank you.
Okay, anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the write-off of provincial offenses fines for two thousand and twenty one. And that council approved the write-off of twelve fines totaling fifty-two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars fifty cents as listed on the attached write-off of provincial offenses fines over one thousand dollars in accordance with policy POA slash one point zero two. Moved by Deputy Warden Naggetts, second by councillor Wilhelm. Any questions? Those in favor? Gary, perfect. Thanks, Danette.
Thank you.
And then we have the elimination of uh, license plate renewal fees, and I do believe Linda is doing this one.
Morning, Warden. Good morning, council. It's the fastest report I've ever written. We didn't find out about it until February twenty second. And I wanted to bring it to council's attention. Um, I mean, I received an email from City of Stratford councillor Henderson, and she wondered if I'd heard anything about it, and I said, no. And then about a week later, there's the news release from the province. Um, as I understand it, from what the province has released, we will continue to collect the parking fines through the plate denial system. And we'll continue to collect um, anything where it's the owner of the vehicle that's charged, and the fine has gone into default. Um, like school bus owners, um. For other municipalities, it's red light cameras, things like that. So I'm hoping it doesn't really have any impact on us. Um, I believe they're hoping that people will pay all their fines so that they can renew their plates. They, that's still a requirement. But um, I mean, it's so, so new, I, that's all I can tell you for now.
Okay, thanks, Linda. Any questions for Linda on that? Deputy Warden Naggetts?
So will people still get a, a sticker even though they don't pay for it? Like, I'm, I'm a little confused how it's gonna work. If you, if you don't get a sticker, then how do they, how do they know that you need to come in, or how do they know that there's a fine there? It's gonna make the people.
What, what's gonna make?
Now you gotta get that sticker, so you go in and you pay for it, right? So if, if you don't have to pay for the sticker, people still required to come in to get, get a sticker, even though you don't pay for it, or how, I'm, I'm a little confused how this is all gonna work. Maybe he can use it, and maybe he knows.
Well, you and me both.
Uh, it's my understanding that the stickers are gone. Uh, Annette?
Hi, so it's my understanding that you still will need to renew your plate and do that online. And that, if you are pulled over, the police will still be running your plates to find out whether or not you renewed, so that charge still exists. And if you haven't done it, then you will be fined. When you renew your plate online, that's when they'll test whether or not you have any outstanding municipal fine, and they must pay for that renewal given online.
Councillor, right?
She's partially right. You don't have to renew your plate online. You can still go in in person. So it's on your birthday, you're, you, you're required to come into the service Ontario or go online and bring your proof of insurance information, the mileage to your vehicle, so that, under the Insurance Act, they have that. You go in, it's exactly, when it comes up, there is no sticker, but you don't owe any money. If you have a fine for Linda, you will be required to pay it at the terminal or online. Big trucks are not exempt, but the price is supposed to come down, as Bob knows, but nobody's told the girl in the office how much it comes down. Um, so you still have to renew your driver's license every five years, your health card every five years. Get your picture taken every ten, I believe. But it's all the details, I, like, I'll be honest with you, between my telephone and my iPad, um, the, the devil is in the details. People think, hey, I don't have to do nothing. No, my neighbors. You know, do I gotta come in? Yeah, you still have to come in and say, I have a truck. Do I owe any money? Right? And, and so you still have to either do it online or go to the service Ontario every year. They might extend it every two years, but they've said now it probably yearly, because they want Linda, who is now gonna be Danette, to get her money every year, not every two years. But they still have, a policeman can pull you over and say, hey, your sticker's out of date. Here's your two hundred and seventy-five dollar fine. And you say, well, I didn't know I had to get a sticker. Yes, you have to get the representation of a sticker. You don't put it physically on your car, but you still have to have it. Apparently, five provinces have taken this away. So, but they still, you still have to renew every year, online or in person. From what I understand.
Uh, I'm gonna guess Linda's office and Danette's office is gonna be busier, because I'll guarantee you that the bulk of people won't realize they have to register or renew their plate online. And that is really what the province is looking for, is it to all move online. Let's be serious. Like, everything, they want everything online now.
Yes, they will cut all the private issuers out, and the Perth County will have one service Ontario. It used to be behind the courthouse, it'll now be wherever. Um, and that's what they're gonna, they've been trying to get everybody to go online for years. It hasn't worked. Um, but now they're, this is just another venue to eliminate people's, like, work, jobs.
Okay, other questions or comments? I have a motion, Perth County Re- Council receives the Ontario Government Elimination of License Plate Renewal Fees Report for Information. That Perth County Council approved the report to present it, to be presented to Municipal Shared Service Committee on March the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by councillor Casenberg, second by councillor McKenzie. Those in favor? That's carried, and we're gonna move on to the next one, and that is activities from the Stratford Perth Archives. We should get her on the screen here shortly.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, council. Uh, the report from archives that you have is our quarterly update uh, for the upcoming MSSC meeting. It summarizes how we operated last year in twenty twenty one. Certainly, the pandemic had an effect on how services were provided and promoted to the public. But staff here continue to make significant progress in cataloging and digitization, along with collections management and development projects. Some of these projects, like the disaster preparedness plan and the exhibition policy, were the subject of separate reports last year. Others have been noted in the report that you have today. So I'll just, at this point, say thank you for your time. If any questions or concerns about what's in the report or archives operations in general, I'm always happy to try to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty Jo. Questions for Betty Jo on that report? Not seeing a whole lot of hands moving. Okay, I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the activities report from Stratford Perth Archives for MSSC report, and council approved the report for submission to MSSC meeting of March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by councillor Wilhelm, second by councillor McDermott. Those in favor? Gary, okay, we're gonna move on. To Statement of Renumeration and Expenses for Council and Appointed Committees. And that would be Corey. And that would be Cory. Oh, there's Cory. All righty, Cory.
Uh, good morning, Warden, counsel. Um, so this report in front of you is the uh. Uh, basically, the annual statement of re- remunerations in relation to um council expenses as well as appointed committees. Um, the report is there, the attached appendix indicates the dollars, the cents in relation to reimbursements. For council and uh the appointed committees. So if there's any questions on the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Cory on this report? Not seeing any hands go up. I have a motion that Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty-one Statement of Remuneration and Expenses. For council and appointed committees report. Moved by. Counselor Willholm, second by Counselor Hurley. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? That's Gary. Perfect. We're gonna move on. Cory?
Yes, this uh next report is in relation to the uh just recently approved tender in relation to the courthouse elevator project. Um, with the uh e- ever increasing interest rates, and actually Wednesday, they actually increased the rate of uh twenty-five, or point two-five. Um, to a point five um rate. Uh, it'd be looking to try to get into a debenture now, uh, and try to get a favorable rate. Uh, currently, uh, at the beginning of the project versus uh at the end of the project. Uh, we do have a solid number of uh one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand for the project. Uh, and we're looking to debenture that amount for the elevator project, uh, and again, over ten years, and hopefully. And try to get around that three percent when we actually fi- complete the application, et cetera. But a further report will come when, when the application is finalized with uh, with bylaws, et cetera, for the debenture. So if there's any questions on the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Cory on this report? Not seeing any hands go up. Cory, I got a motion here. Perth County Council receives the Perth County Courthouse Elevator Project Financing Report. And that Perth County Council approved the submission of a debenture application with infrastructure in peril. For the courthouse elevator project in the estimated amount of one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Over a term of ten years. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Callum, Deputy Ward Nagets. Uh, any? Questions or comments? Last chance. Those in favor? That's Gary. Perfect. Three percent still, not too bad there, Cory.
Hopefully, that, by the time the application goes through, that, that's still the percentage and, and uh the impeding interest rate increases are not uh evident until later on.
Perfect. Okay, we're gonna move on. Thanks, Cory. And next we have. Paramedic Services. Don't forget to ask Cory if she's got a sunshine list information for them. We got that. In our council package for our staff.
Yeah. Yeah, it's Tuesday. The deadline.
Mike here, Mike Crowley. Right into the board. Okay. Morning, Mike and Mike. We got Mike Crowley and Mike Adair. I believe.
Morning. Just adjust the camera here a little bit. Um, it says my internet connection's unstable, so hopefully if um I break up a little bit, just let me know, Warden. So through the Warden, thank you um for the opportunity uh once again to present. This is. This uh the first MSSC report that has come before you, that uh will go to MSSC on the seventeenth, if you approve it. And this is also our annual report. So this report is, I, I did the same sort of format of report last year, and this report. Uh, is to be used with our business report and our, our business plan. And in our business plan, we're forecasting some of the year-end results, but this actually illustrates what those end-of-year results are now that we had some opportunity and time to go through uh data and statistics. Uh, so thank you for the opportunity to present this. Um. I think uh. I'll jump right in and go through some of the things and some of the changes um as we go. I also want to um. At the beginning of this report, I, I do highlight uh some of our um rock stars and um. I think, you know, our mission, uh, Counselor Ida's to uh develop a whole bunch of fans, which are our patients, right, and to always take care of them, to use that analogy and to latch on to it a little bit. Uh, it resonates with me, and uh that's something that we are continuing to do here at Paramedic Services. We have all of our paramedics, um, you know, throughout the pandemic, and I've spoken to this before. Have done a great job at uh stepping up to the plate and uh coming into work and uh serving the population here. But so have the support of the community, our system partners, uh, that, both in health and emergency services. Uh, council and really the citizens of uh Perth County. So we're um really gracious and um hopeful. And thankful that. Um, we've had support over the last couple of years, and we're hopeful that uh there is a light at the end of the tunnel as we move forward. So. You know, with that in mind, in the context of uh what we're dealing with, I have a few things that we're reporting on, and so on page one eighteen of our report. Uh, you'll notice that we uh highlight the call volume uh from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty-one. More about the call volume will come out next uh council uh during this March the seventeenth, when our consultants will have an opportunity to present. Um, what we're, what their forecasts are for the next uh ten years. But as you can see, over the past a few years, we've seen. Roughly a sixteen, seventeen percent increase in calls since two thousand and twelve. And under this chart, you'll notice that there are two new things that weren't uh included last year, and the first thing is just. A definition, the formula, and our data source that we're uh using to uh create some of the calculations, which just shows that we're standardizing our key, uh key performance indicators. And then the second thing is um, I have like a little chart under each of the. Under each of the uh data points that we're inserting into this report, which just really is to deal with the, so now what? And I have had in the past a question that came forward from uh actually Counselor Kessenberg. Who um was asking, so what are you gonna do about um uh a particular item? So this was inspired by that and thought that. It is a uh a good addition to these reports, and so I certainly am open to feedback, whether it be in this council meeting or um outside of it offline. Um, so on call volume, we will be addressing that uh through the next report that'll come on the seventeenth and um look at how we can strategize in the future to best serve our population. Uh, response time performance plan. This response time performance plan was something that is. Approved by council. This was approved uh several years ago, and we have not made changes here in Perth County. There are two things I want to draw your attention to, and the first one is under sudden cardiac arrest, and the second one is under CTAS level one. So under certain sudden cardiac arrest for our two thousand and twenty-one, we did not meet our um achieved target, which is fifty-one percent. And in CTAS one, we also did not meet our uh chief target for seventy percent of the time arriving on scene with eight, within eight minutes. We achieved uh forty-seven percent for this SEAs and sixty-two percent for the CTAS ones. A couple of um, so under the change ideas, I address this uh right now, and so the first one is under sudden cardiac arrest. Are. Um, the, the way that we uh report on that is um only with paramedic statistics. But really, this measure in accordance to the province includes the time that an automatic external defibrillator arrived outside of the patient, uh side of the patient. And with our tiered response program that's in place and our local fire services, we do believe that this number is much higher and um. We have an opportunity to work with our fire chiefs to actually share data and um be able to report an accurate number. So. That's our mission and goals, to see if we are gonna be able to enter into some data sharing agreements. And what will it take from an IT and a staff perspective in order to um uh have a more realistic report? So we're gonna work on that um as we talk about tiered response across the uh county, and um I know our fire chiefs are very supportive of that initiative. So point two, which is uh CTAS uh level one calls, we have. For that uh data period of two thousand and twenty-one, we've only had a hundred and thirteen calls, so you will see swings, uh high and low in. In the report of this um, in this particular line, because it's a low dataset, but. You know, it also was influenced where those calls are happening. So if they're in a more rural area, we do expect that uh response times are gonna be over eight minutes. But notwithstanding, since we've seen a decrease over the past two years, I think it's important that we drill down in, into where those calls are happening, just to make sure that we're doing everything we can to always. Uh, work towards our response target. So uh we will be uh doing an investigation into that and, and, and into the data to find out where those calls are happening, and just so that we can make sure that our assumptions are um accurate. Uh, patient hospital transfer of care. Uh, we wanna see our ambulances arrive at a hospital and leave within thirty minutes. We're achieving those targets right now as a whole, but it's something that we're gonna continue to monitor. And we're gonna work with the Emergency Medicine and Critical Care Program. And uh council um and uh continue to monitor that, because I know that it's something that is. Becoming more of an issue across the province, and with the staffing shortages in hospitals, it's something that it's, it's worthy of us to continue to monitor. Our co-criticals are something that's tracked by our dispatch center, and uh they report um the number of uh hours where um. Where were three or less ambulances available to respond in our county. And uh we did see an increase from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, but we also saw an increase of call volume, so we're not overly surprised by this, but it's something that we continue to monitor. Our reaction time is the time that paramedics are notified that there's a call that's coming in, so there's like a beep that goes off in our, our uh. Our uh bases, and this is the um ninetieth percent um of the time we are uh under two minutes um and uh doing uh quite well in this area. We are gonna look at reducing um the two-minute response time after COVID, but right now, because of a particular COVID needs, we do need to give our staff some time to make sure that they're donning their PPE properly. Um, as they're leaving the station, going out to a call. So we're leaving it right now, and you'll see that under the change idea that I've left that as a holding item. To come back to. Uh, training and quality assurance. Uh, one of the statistics that we report on is that we, we uh. Have to make sure that we're auditing uh twenty percent of our ambulance call reports, so those are the patient care records. And so during two thousand and twenty-one, we achieved that goal of auditing twen- two thousand, one hundred and ninety-four records, and our requirement was two thousand records for that reporting period. Um, we also are working under the change idea to um do some further training with our commanders, who are the frontline individuals who are doing those audits. Um, so that we can uh better serve our paramedics and patients and have a standardized approach. Under quality assurance activities, I just was reporting that, you know, we did fifty-nine internal reviews, and those are things that. Aren't always complaints or concerns, but sometimes they are also things that might come forward through an audit that we need to follow up on. So it just shows that we're active and actively following up in areas that we need to. Um, and that we completed forty-four online in two thousand and sixteen classroom or synchronous learning modules this year, so we're. Uh, our investments into education of our paramedics are um bolstered and uh going quite well. Our COVID nineteen um report, uh you'll see that uh i- it, it just really, at the end of the day. Um. With Omicron um increasing in December, you'll just see that there's uh a spike back up again, and this is just. The number of patients that we need to take uh cope, treat as if they may have COVID, and so you'll see um each month how that sort of impacted, and that. Really reflects both case counts in the county as well as. Um, as well as across the province. Uh, mobile integrated health. Um, I am pleased to report that we received two weeks ago or three weeks ago, the uh final letter from the province um that the money will be transferred into our account. Which is great, so we're actively recruiting and expanding our mobile integrated health program right now, and also purchasing both the capital. Um, things that we need to uh buy, including a couple of vehicles, as well as um equipment like defibrillators, so we're actively doing that right now. And then um finally, I'll talk just a little bit about some of the interactions with uh with uh Medevi Health Services. We're gonna continue. To support our commanders through the Harvard Business Leadership uh Training Program this year. Um. I'm gonna continue to partner with uh Chatham, uh Kent and Elgin for things like vehicle purchases or defibrillator purchases. Um, or be looking at bringing in a particular type of software program to help with business planning, uh which may help with the consultant report that we'll discuss next week. Um, we've provided some rapid antigen testing to Perth County uh Paramedic Services at no cost to the county when uh we were low. Um, so there was a contingency plan that was in place. And um those are just a couple of things that are going on. So that concludes my report, and I'm certainly open to uh any questions. And we also have Deputy Chief Mike Crowley here today to uh support and support and, and would be able to answer questions as well from, from operations perspective.
Okay, thank you, Mike Adair, and I'll just ask Mike Crowley if he has anything he would like to add.
Oh, nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, questions for either Mike? Counselor Casenberg?
Uh, uh, first to the uh mics, maybe it's Mike squared, I don't know. Um, uh, thank you for uh your comprehensive report, and I love the fact that you've added uh your change idea sections uh into the report, uh chief, and um. And so I, I certainly appreciate that. Um, I'm, it's just a question of curiosity. Uh, you talk about doing these audits of um. Of reports and uh a significant volume of audits. In fact, two thousand, I think you said, Chief Adair. Um, can you tell me what happens after that? You know, you've, you've got the data and, and that's helpful, but. I assume that there are some sort of practice improvement um suggestions that can emerge from such an audit. Uh, and um how do you sort of communicate and work with the paramedics to support them in improving their skills and, and capabilities and reaction times and all that kind of stuff?
Wonderful. Uh, Deputy Crowe, did you wanna have a stop at that, or we just like need to uh go ahead?
That's a QA. Well, I'll let you do that one.
All right. Well, we do work uh in partnership, so our commanders will do the um audits, and there's two different things that we're looking for. Or two different reports that we're looking at. One is um the actual ambulance call report, and the next one is our incident reports, and both are legislated. Requirements. And so when we go through it, we have a checklist essentially that helps us to ensure that all the practices, policies and procedures are being followed um based on the. Uh, based on what we're, our findings are, and so our ambulance call report software program has the ability and capacity to have some workflows in it. So the feedback is provided by the supervisor directly to the employee or the paramedic that is uh doing the call. So. Depending on what the findings are, um often, and for the majority of our, you know, our feedback, it's like, this call was well done, good job, you know. You've crossed your Ts and dotted your Is. Thank you very much. And then if we find something that um is an immediate patient safety risk, then it would be escalated to one of the deputies, and. We would open an investigation and make sure that uh we put corrective measures in place uh right away. But for the majority of the time, um, you know, if there's any constructive feedback to provide to the paramedics, it will be between that paramedic and the supervisor, so. The information will go directly to uh through that workflow to the paramedics, or it might be a, a tailgate conversation discussion. And then um if there are improvements or clarifications, which occur sometimes, then there's an addendum that's added to that patient care record, so. Um, it might just be that, for example, um, somebody didn't do three sets of blood pressures, and it's required under the uh standards of the act. Then they might say, well, the patient's arm was getting really sore, and they were stable, so we decided not to do the third blood pressure, but they hadn't documented it, right? So then they would just do an addendum, they would put that in there, and the case would be closed. So does that answer the question? I could probably talk more about it, because my background's QA, so I can get in. I'm not gonna bore you all.
It wa- it was, it was delightful to learn that the process that you're using. I'm, I'm uh grateful for you sharing that with us. Thanks, Mike.
For sure.
Other questions for either Mike? Counselor Willholm?
Yes, thank you, Mike. Excellent report, and I'm glad to see expanding in, in education, et cetera. A little concerned that uh we missed our mark on our SCA and CTS ones. Um, is that uh partially attributable to uh the? Length of getting out of the station, or what's uh, how are you going to improve so we can improve our response time in those two?
Uh, good question. Uh, good questions. I, you know, I'm confident in terms of time gain of the station. If you look at the average at the ninetieth percentile, which would have the biggest impact on that. We're about a minute and forty seconds or a minute and a half. Um, so I think in that area, we're actually doing quite well and we've been monitoring that, I can say very closely over the past uh, two years. Uh, Deputy Crowley um, certainly could speak to that and, and Deputy Keizer have been wa- monitoring that. Um, so the statistics that we're bringing forward to you today, we do look at on a monthly basis as well. In terms of the sudden cardiac arrest, so there's a couple of factors. Um, eh, one of them is that I think last year. These, the cardiac arrests that we report on are ones that are viable, meaning that they're the ones that an ambulance um, is required to make a difference to that patient. Um, so if you're, you know, if you're, if, if it's a uh, end of life thing, it might not be counted in those things. But we had, I think it was around fifty. Oh, it's backwards. Um, but it's a low number. I'm just gonna actually give you that number. Um. We had fifty-five of those cases last year. And we were cheat, we're achieving forty-seven percent. So we're pretty close to the fifty-one and that's for six-minute response time. So anytime we respond in a rural area, we essentially are gonna have a very hard time making that six percent. Um, or that six-minute response time. And so that is one of the contributing factors is that, you know. The expectations and, and what our targets are um, what are hard to meet when um, we're dealing with a rural area. Um, and that translates directly into the C task one uh, conversation as well. We have a hundred and thirteen calls uh, for twenty twenty-one. We achieve sixty-two percent of the time. Um, we're achieving an eight-minute response time. And that's where we really do want to investigate, just to make sure that we are doing everything we can uh, to uh, from a deployment standpoint. Point, we're putting the paramedic uh, vehicles in the right areas to make sure that we're meeting those targets. And uh, that would be like one, like as one example. So if we find, as an example, through an investigation period that C task one uh, calls. Um, that the, 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 the assumption, and we verify the assumption is that if those calls are in rural areas. And we're doing everything we can to put ambulances in those areas, then there may be um, you know. We'll have to look at what options we have to improve that. And if there are no options based on the resources we have right now, then you know, it's a different conversation. And maybe um, you know, we, we think about the, the targets that we're setting at that point, right? In a rural area. So we can um, that's something, you know, in quarter two, we're gonna come back uh, to council with uh, those findings. And we can have that dialogue then. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Deputy Warden Nagus, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Uh, great report, Mike. I was just wondering about the paramedicine. It, are we finding increases? Is that increasing or staying the same or what is it? You know, is the community aware, aware of it or? How, how do you find that program?
Sure, yeah. So the community paramedic program, um, the mobile integrated health, um, in terms of where we are right now. Um, it's kind of getting to a critical mass where we're about to really expand. And um, we don't, you know, like our partners are aware of the fact that it's going to expand. And a lot of our referrals come through our paramedic services as well as referrals are coming through um. Our health system partners. Uh, we haven't done a targeted advertising campaign yet because we haven't had the, um, I mean, our, our, our funding was only um. That we've had funding, but our more consistent funding wasn't uh, secured until last week. Um, it was announced prior to that, uh, but uh, for right now, I think that, that, that's, that's a great um. Question that can inform our uh, approach to how we continue to roll this out in terms of. In terms of uh, in terms of uh, public knowledge. Now, um, on the, you know, um, in terms of how do we find the program and, and the differences in, in terms of. Uh, in terms of call volume, what we can say is that we have uh, several uh, repeat clients um, that. Require frequent nine-one calls and we do believe that that reduces uh, those calls. Um, but um, a- a- and we know that we also are uh, working with um. You know, the hospitals to keep people outside of, outside of the hospital and those types of things, which is why it's important that this is also at this point funded. Uh, why we're very grateful it's funded by the province. Um, so yeah, it has an impact um, on our system. And I think over time, it will continue to have an impact on the system because if we can prevent people from going to the hospital, then. It prevents an ambulance call and then it prevents awful delays and it prevents that whole uh, string of things. So in terms of uh, quantify, I can give you the um, statistics. I don't have them right in front of me in terms of how many people we've interacted with. What I wouldn't be able to do is, at this moment, is tell you how many people we have. Um. I guess, you know, what that exact dollar translates to in the health system because we don't have those metrics in place and they're hard to measure.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for either Mike? Well. Don't see any questions, but I got a comment. So Mike Adair and I chatted briefly a week or so ago about this report. And I pointed out the fact to him and he kind of alluded to there when Counselor Wilhelm asked the question. I said, if there was a sudden cardiac arrest phoned in from my property. There isn't a first chance anybody's gonna get there in that timeframe. Whether it's tiered response or not, like it just isn't gonna happen because it's brutal. And I know Mike said they were gonna do a little further drill down and. See exactly where some of these calls were, but and even on the C task one. You'd be struggling to, to be at my place and that, well, I don't think you would be at my place. In that time limit. So maybe there will need to be some adjustment, but overall, paramedics have done a great job this last year. Actually, not a great job. They've done a super job. They've been. Far uh. I don't know, they just over and above what they really had to do, especially with all the COVID. And uh, anyway, no, I wanna thank paramedic services and it was a great report. Anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the municipal shared services committee slash Perth Paramedic Services. Two thousand and twenty-one final report for information. And the Perth County Council approved the municipal shared service committee slash Perth Paramedic Services two thousand and twenty-one final report. For admission to the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the municipal shared services committee. Moved by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Counselor Deputy Warden Nagus. Last chance for questions or comments? Those in favor? That's carried. And just before you get away, Mike, any word from uh, Matt? Yeah, on the other proposal?
Not yet.
All right. Can't wait. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Warden, Counselors.
So we're gonna move on to the next section. We're gonna keep going until we get to uh, closed session because that'll take a few minutes to set up. Anyway, council reports. Bylaws. Of nothing. Notice of motions. Nothing. Other business. Don't see anything. Announcements. Anybody have any announcements? I have one. Next meeting, March seventeenth, we'll be moving to a hybrid meeting. And we'll be operating out of paramedic services again. So there will be the option of in-person or Zoom, just so you're aware. Okay. We now need to move into closed session. Okay, so I have a motion, Perth County moving to closed session at approximately ten thirty-eight AM. In accordance with section two thirty-nine of the municipal act two thousand and twenty-one. Dot slash C slash twenty-five to consider a matter pertaining to labor relations. And a matter pertaining to an, to an identifiable individual. Move by. Counselor Wilhelm, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Scary. Perfect. So we're gonna go into closed session. We are in closed session, not going, we are. And we're gonna take a five-minute break. Because we have to stop. We're good? Okay, so last we have confirmatory bylaw. Be in a bylaw three, eight, six, four, dash, two, oh, two, two, be in a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth. And it's regular meeting held March third, two thousand and twenty-two is ready, first, second, third time and finally passed on March third. Two thousand and twenty-two. Move by. Counselor I, seconded by Counselor Hurlick. Those in favor? That is carried. And last but not least, I have a motion to adjourn at eleven eighteen. Move by. Count Deputy Warden Nagus, second by Counselor Casenberg. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much for your indulgence this morning and have a wonderful rest of the day and week.